We're here on Tuesday, April one. This is the planning board meeting and we have a quorum. Is there a motion to open the meeting?
Motion open.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Very good. We'll just switch the over around just to accommodate one of our applicants. We'll take the request for the extension of time on the Emilio twenty six three Glendale Road. This is an application for a preliminary subdivision plat approval and this is a request for a ninety day extension.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Jaclyn Cohen. I'm an associate at Zerrin Simons. Here today on behalf of the owners of sixty three Glendale, Joseph Emilio. And so we are seeking an extension of the waiver of your board's jurisdiction over the re-subdivision plat that you approved in October twenty twenty four. The reason for the extension is we are still awaiting DOH's signature. We did receive some comments from them recently and we expect to respond, submit our response within the next week or so. So we are asking for a ninety day extension until July twelfth.
Okay, thank you. No objections from staff on this? Bob, Sabrina, Dennis?
No.
No.
Okay, any objections or problems from members of the board?
I would just ask, is not, you do you expect resolution at ninety days? Or do we make this one eighty so you don't have to come back in ninety days?
Um, so we do expect resolution. We did, we just had minor comments for DOH.
Okay.
So we would, you know, we expect to submit within the next week or so and then hopefully, hopefully they will respond rather quickly. Um, that said, if you can submit anything you can.
I don't think you can.
Yep, oh, okay, then forget, then we'll forget my question.
I think I'm back to ninety, I think.
We will come back in ninety days if need be, but we hope, we hope we don't have to.
Okay, very good. Is there a motion to grant the extension requested by the applicant? Motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? So you're all set? Just tell your partners it was a miserable, long night.
I'll look around.
And they gave you such a tough time, we went through everything, piecemeal.
Thank you very much.
Okay, take care. Okay, we move now to our next item. This is an informal appearance before the board. This is the CG Homes LLC, four fifty six and four sixty two Armont Road. This is an application for a preliminary subdivision plat approval, application for a stormwater management and erosion and sedimentation control and tree removal permit for construction of a four lot subdivision. Ralph, you hear a rebuttal?
Can I hear you?
Yes, yep.
So, um, so we submitted these plans essentially to start the secret clock going. Um, there's been no material changes to the plans. We're in the process of getting our testing done this week with Westchester County Farmer Health for the second time and New York City DEP for stormwater. We're also in the process of doing our site distance analysis. We've already had the speed sensors out there and they're compiling that data. And we would just, you know, we're getting all the information ready. We just submitted this work to get the clock started. There was some additional information Sabrina needed as far as coverage worksheets and things like that. A full environmental assessment for them and I think we've given all that in.
Okay, um, I think we have some comments. Sabrina, you have comments?
Yeah, thank you for submitting that. Um, there's two aspects tonight that I have for the board. Um, the first is that there's some corrections that need to be made regarding the zoning setbacks and ensuring that the third lot, I don't know if that's a typo Ralph, or there's an issue with that complying with the earlier setbacks. Um, my comment regarding the septic systems within the setbacks, that was a misunderstanding, so that no longer applies. Um, when it comes to the seeker process, it is an unlisted action and I have prepared for the board a draft notice of intent to be circulated to involved and interested agencies. So, um, tonight, if you're so inclined, you would, um, resolve to become lead agency and circulate that notice of intent as final, in a final format. And it was pointed out that the date does need to be changed on that. Um, other than that, Ralph did say he submitted the coverage calculations worksheets. My only other comment is regarding the twenty five foot, um, distance between the boulders. Um, and Dennis, this is really your area of expertise, but I really would like the board to contemplate whether or not the boulders are an adequate demarcation of that wetland buffer on these individual lots. And, you know, just thinking back to previous conservation subdivisions, one of your first subdivisions, Random Farms, there really was no barrier that was placed by the planning board to demarcate that wetland buffer. Um, Sutton Farms was a conservation subdivision and you required a fence with wire mesh to be placed to demarcate the buffer. Um, you know, so in both instances, you know, there are differences. We see a lot of Random Farms property owners before us, um, to make corrections to their property when it comes to coverage and re-instituting buffer area. Um, with Sutton Farms, not so much. So I leave it to Dennis and to your board to really decide how you want that buffer treated. And that really is all of my comments. I think at the time, um, the, the lead agency tolling is a thirty day tolling. Um, I think that as Ralph said, they're, they're, you know, um, addressing the engineer's comments. Um, and we look forward to having a resubmission.
Okay, thank you Sabrina.
Sure.
Bob, do you want to run through your comments?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Yeah, Ralph seemed to address those, the three big assignments I did have, as Lorie just mentioned. Uh, number one being sideline analysis, which is critical, which will dictate layouts. Obviously, the answer is to the whole subdivision, which is number one of my comments. And also two, number two, uh, which he did just mention Ralph before, uh, they're in the process of doing the D test holes and the filtration test for the horses kind of toward now, which is critical. That's going to establish the viability of the lots here as shown. That's number two, which is great, thank you so much Ralph. Um, number three, obviously this comes a little bit later, but because of the situation and the way the planning board is going with the subdivision and the common driveways, uh, they're going to need maintenance access easements for the driveways, which will probably include utilities and all drainage, which is going to be privately maintained. Uh, that's something that the town council left a little at and I guess they'll be working with Jeff on that, with drainage and stormwater, that's number three. Ralph, what you do in the final analysis of clearing grading or the limits of disturbance, I'm making sure you add in the proper aquatic benches as per DEC when you're doing the final design. But there's a stormwater that might increase the size in the area of the stormwater itself on the north side of the lot, that's number four.
Hey Bob, can I, can I ask you?
Yes, yes.
Can I ask you where aquatic bench is?
Well, that's basically a safety area, so people have the opportunity to get out where it's not too steep. Because if it's not fitted, anyone goes in there, there'll be a fence around this anyway. But if someone doesn't know, when there's a small child, it's not that steep where you can walk out. If you have something greater than like three and one, it's very difficult to get out of the pond, so that's what it's, it's like a safety match.
Okay, great, thanks.
And those are very critical, D C is big on those and I'm sure D E P will be as well. Um, number five, just indicate the SMPs, it seems to be Ralph just described understanding and the planning board's understanding. Uh, it looks to me you're going to collect all of the roof theaters, all the runoff and roadways and pool areas and everything's going to be collected via a conveying system going down to the stormwater system.
Yes.
That is the intent?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, also two, seven subject properties located in East Tons Water Station. Obviously, D E P will have their time and glory here to review this. Um, so I guess you'll be doing the deep subversion. If you can do me one favor when you're doing that, uh, could you contact Jeff and Terry? So a lot of times they might want to go out there too, when the witness and the deep subversion story wants on the same page. On what D E P not accepted very big modeling, I know, I was at the years ago with the Agaria. And any type of modeling they see, they just say, good. So, uh, let's see how that goes, but please give Jeff a call and Terry so they can win this. And I'm sure Jeff wants to see if Terry loads as well. And of course, once that's done, there'll be a whole slew of other technical reviews, uh, not by Jeff. Um, that'd be helpful as well regarding the storm management, common driveway easement, cost estimates, the inspection fees, performance on maintenance, all the fun stuff with subdivision. Uh, so that, that's my overall last actual phrase at the bottom. Uh, and that ends my review for tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you Bob. Bob, we had mentioned, uh, we had discussed briefly the access road coming off of Route one twenty eight that go, that's going into the common driveway. And I think we had observed that we thought we might want to ask Ralph to take a look at a wider roadway coming off of Route one twenty eight.
Right, that's a good point, Mr. Chairman. You didn't miss that, thank you for the pickup. Uh, yeah Ralph, I would recommend that you might want to make that twenty four twelve and twelve coming in and out. Just that roadway coming in, all for one twenty eight. Um, you said you already have the aprons here that DOT will want, but I think it'll be making it much safer. Ingress and egress with the cars and any fire trucks that have to come in. Just that single roadway coming in, make that two eight twelve and twelve, twenty four, we recommend. And all the other roads, um, I think they should be minimum twenty foot. Uh, pavement to pavement and if you're going to have swell on the outside, twenty and two and two. You just really had to go through this in the east village and the building inspector and the fire marshal and the fire chief are very adamant on this, so you might want to do it now so there's no problem later on. All those roads should be minimum twenty feet for the main road and two and two for the hourbers.
Okay, so you may have to adjust the coverage accordingly, but it shouldn't be that big a deal.
Yeah, sure, it should be fine.
Yep, great.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the pickup.
Okay, thanks. Okay, Dennis, you had comments?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the, uh, the first one is a, it's just a carryover, it's, it's on the plans and I just, you know, just repeating it because I didn't see that it was changed, not, not a big deal, just a notation. Just unclear about one particular tree, uh, appears to be just number ninety five, couldn't tell. And, uh, they did apparently add per comment last time to remove, uh, the extra tree of heavens. So I have definitely no issue with that. And as, uh, you know, Ralph had mentioned, obviously they're going through studies that I think may end up resulting in a change slash increase of potential tree removals, especially that line of site, uh, survey. So, um, just as a carryover that obviously there's nothing proposed at this time with regards to how they're going to be tree replacement, plantings, treatment fund. And that's, uh, perfectly fine because we don't know those, those final numbers. Expanding off of what Sabrina mentioned with respect to the demarcation of the wetlands buffer. So I did see that they had proposed the stones twenty five boulders, twenty five feet apart. And, you know, going back to my last memo, you know, I, I did want something that was, uh, obviously permanent, but also to be more, uh, I think I used the term like tight and spaced. And I realized that in that memo, I didn't, you know, make mention of, you know, why in, in this particular case. I mean, there could be all kinds of reasons why you want to demarcate, you know, wetlands, wetlands buffer, not just on plan, but, you know, on planet earth. And in this particular case, uh, I know I had mentioned previously, and, you know, it's funny, it's probably as a, as a consequence of, of the use of the property prior, which, you know, I assume areas look to be almost excavated and, and removed, probably sands, whatnot. But whatever was left behind, you know, you, you've produced a, like a upland wildflower meadow community with very little to no intervention. And, you know, in my, my experience in Newcastle, I really haven't seen that, that, that type of community. It always seems to be, um, transitioning to shrubs or there's, you know, obviously in, 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 encouraging into the general area by, by invasives, whatever. But for whatever reason, this seems to be working great all on its own. And I just felt like because of its uniqueness and because it's not a lot of woody specimens, I know people understandably respectful, looking to protect trees, shrubs. This is just a unique community in this spot. So, you know, from my other inspections and experiences in Newcastle, when I see other properties, you know, that, that transition line from, you know, where, where, where regular landscaping and maintain turf cover and mulch beds end and it gets more wild, that sometimes just serves as an area too where things get pushed in, transitioned, blown in. Because, you know, the owners don't want to look at that on their finished manicured area. And the people that they typically hire don't look to carry that stuff away either. So it ends up just getting blown in, pushed in, piled on, uh, along with some inorganic items too, like, you know, a couple flower pots, you know, which I think is kind of funny. Um, and Christmas trees and whatever. So, so in this particular community, I think if, if, if that is initiated, I think over time, there's going to be, you know, sort of a creep and a shrinkage of, of what you have and now and kind of get the typical, all these escaped garden and, and landscape species that, you know, will do well in disturbed environments and full sun. You know, wooded environments sometimes, uh, just by the, the lack of photo period hitting the forest floor, those particular invasives don't really start to take, I mean, you notice them, but they don't like take hold. But this environment, there would be some concern. So I'm, you know, I'm thinking of something that's more, um, continuous and, you know, serves as an impediment, obviously, for, for vehicles, mowers, blowers, et cetera. But, you know, then there was, you know, some discussion which I didn't include in my memo that if you even, you know, wanted to pair that with, with some signage just to, you know, what the significance of this area is, you know, just, just any way to sort of keep it, um, a- as is and not, and not have, uh, and anyone, not only not look to do development, but really, you know, other than, you know, obviously footprints, not, not look to, you know, place anything in there or store anything or deposit anything. So that's why I was, twenty five feet apart boulders is not going to accomplish that.
So is the object, is the objective of this line to just be a visual demarcation? Or is it to be something that says you cannot go past it, so we're putting up? Like I heard we did a fence and wire mesh and to me, that's a barrier.
Mm-hmm.
But if you just put stones every four feet, long guys could still bring all the long cuttings through the four foot stones and dump them in the wetlands.
Sure.
So I'm assuming the fence is to stop people from doing that. Um, whereas the stones is just a visual thing that says, okay, please don't.
Right, right.
Right?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just trying to clarify. I think in this case, what, what Dennis is arguing is that the, there's enough uniqueness about this site, about this buffer. You know, we normally work, uh, are concerned with demarcation. And I think what Dennis is saying here is it's, it requires more in this particular case perhaps. And that's, uh, the line should be not just only demarcation, but protection.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, we talked about this a little bit briefly earlier this morning and, you know, maybe a knee wall, something like this to keep people out, keep people from blowing stuff in. Or as we did Sutton Farms, a split rail fence with some sort of a wire barrier that would catch stuff if you're trying to blow it. Um, and, and perhaps, you know, uh, the applicant might have different ideas also. But I think this is a little bit different because it's so unique. Uh, what Dennis is describing is a very different environmental feature that we don't see in other places, I haven't seen in, in throughout Newcastle. And by the way, Dennis confirmed that it, it's not one that requires, say, annual mowing. It, it's just a natural meadow, which is really unusual because most of the meadows we've dealt with in this town.
Less is more, yeah.
We have to, they have to cut it at least once a year or so. So this was very interesting to me, but, uh, again, uh, if we do something like this with some sort of protective device, uh, I think it'll be sort of, um, self-regulating as well because I don't think one homeowner would let someone else do it when they're, they've got, uh, you know, a barrier on their property. So it helps that way because we would do it on, it seems to me, on all four.
All four.
And it would be, it's, it's, look, it's a conservation subdivision. The reason we're going for a conservation subdivision was we, we recognize that there's steep slopes and wetlands and buffers here that are important to protect. It's in the environmental overlay district, another thing supporting the, the importance and uniqueness of, of the area. Um, but I want to echo Dennis's, I, I've been, I've been out in the site many times. I mean, this meadow is very, very different. Um, I, I, I work with fields and meadows to the east of this, but those have got to be cut. This, this is very different. So, um, whatever your pleasure is, where your thoughts are, I, I think it's more than demarcation. So the twenty five foot spaced boulders would be inadequate. Probably any kind of boulder spacing, to your point Greg, would be inadequate. It might have to be a solid. It doesn't have to, and, and one of the, the, the things that Dennis pointed out, if you put a four foot wall out there, then people start throwing it over the wall, they don't see it. So maybe a short wall, knee wall, you know, thirty inches, twenty four inches, it could be very handsome.
Or a split wall, oh, that's open.
Yep.
So you have a visual connection through it, you can't, you can't dump and hide.
Yep.
It's probably a little more cost effective than a stone wall.
Could be, yep, right, yep.
That way we don't put too much on or something.
Yep, Ralph, any thoughts?
Um.
We're designing this for you.
Yeah, I, I, I hear that.
You're welcome.
I didn't hear what the last suggestion was, but I think a split rail fence with a mash, what are mashes? Uh, you know, a good, good idea.
That was the last suggestion.
That was great.
Yeah, that's what I would, that's what I would like to propose.
Okay.
And would you, you know, be open to, uh, evenly spaced signage? Just sort of, you know, without, obviously I think I'm going to be tasked probably with kind of developing what that language would be. Obviously, it wouldn't be, you know, a sonnet, but you have to come up with something to just, you know, just sort of alert to like, you know, why the fence is there and, you know, what its purpose, you know.
Yeah, I, I think that's fine as long as it's not, um, like you said, it's not too big, not too close. I mean, it's, it is going to be like a residential property, so I'm sure someone does not want to look at a yellow and black sign in the backyard.
Oh, understood, okay. And, you know, if, if, if there's different owners from different backgrounds, if you would like different languages maybe for each time, we could accommodate that as well, I'm kidding, but I understand.
As long as you keep it less than blue book length. You need, you need braille also for ADA. We could get in trouble. But I mean, appropriate signage. Yes, absolutely. That would make some sense. Okay, good, anything else Dennis?
I don't, thank you.
Okay, all right, anything else, board members, thoughts, questions? I mean, obviously, there's a lot of work to be done. What we have to do here, as it seems to me, is, uh, take on the, adopt the notice and get that out. So we become lead agents and, uh.
And now they can start to remove on this.
Yeah, and again, uh, I think Ralph, at this point, um, the, the notice is one about the conservation subdivision. So there's no need for you to come back in with thirty pages of conventional each time. We're, we're, we're sort of done with that now.
No problem.
That's, that comes to the museums, yes. Great, thank you. And then again, uh, you know, we can focus on, on the issues that we've, uh, we've outlined here. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can you motion for the lead agency?
I was just going to do that, yes.
Do we have to? Didn't you say there's a typo on this, we have to?
It's going to be April one, not March fourth.
It's draft and it will be updated and it'll be circulated with tomorrow's date on it.
So is there a motion to adopt the notice of seeker action?
Motion?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, motion's carried, the notice will be sent out and I think we're set. Um, I think we're all set Ralph, so we'll just wait for your next submission.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Have a wonderful day.
Good night.
Thank you, thanks. Okay, our next item, uh, is the minutes of March eighteen, two thousand twenty five. Anyone have any questions, issues on the minutes?
Yeah, I, I gave Felicia some, some edits, but I had some questions for the group, just to refresh my memory.
Sure.
Can we go to page six? Item line eight. Bob, this is a question for you. Did you and the Commissioner of Public Works talk about the new water main going down the center of the road or on the side in the right of way?
Generally speaking, they like to put it in the roadway itself.
So in the road, okay. So then this thing that says water main in the right of way, we would adjust that?
You can put right of way or roadway, it doesn't matter. But preferably it would be less disturbance if you kept it in the existing roadway that you're now using. I think to the west, there's wetlands and to the other side, it's quite close to the property. So I think you put it within the roadway, existing roadway, hey.
Okay, cool, thank you. Um, my next question, also for the group, uh, going on page six, line item thirty three and thirty four. Uh, their engineer made this statement during the meeting and I just wanted to know if anybody was able to clarify. Is there a minimum house side size for the zoning that she kept talking about? Or was it the lot size has a minimum and not the building size?
Or neither.
Or nee, no, no, the lot has a minimum size, that I recall. But I never heard of a house having a minimum size.
You might be talking about the floor area ratio.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Minimum FAR.
Yeah.
She, you, you're right, she specifically did say, I can't make it any smaller.
Right, she did.
The code prohibits me from doing that.
Right, right.
It has to be this big.
Right, and we all like, are you sure? She said, yeah, so, I, I, do, do we know?
I, I meant to, I didn't, I'll, let me look that up for you.
Okay.
But yeah, I meant to, I meant to look that up too, I.
Okay.
Yeah, I think maybe there's a minimum, is Sabrina, maybe there's a minimum square footage for the meeting?
I don't think that there's a minimum square footage. I think she just needs to meet the, there's might be a minimum, uh, floor area ratio for a single family home.
John will look that up, I guess, just a moment.
Yeah, I can, I'll just take a look.
Thanks, sir.
And then I think, oh, then my, my last question deals with clearing grading limit lines. And this is a question for you, Mr. Attorney. On page seven, line item thirty two, you said for the board to maybe look to eliminate these, it would be a costly endeavor. What's the costly part?
To eliminate?
Yeah, uh, the chairman, he questioned whether the board could impose and or change or eliminate the clearing grading limit lines. Mr. Lovelace stated, it can be changed, but it would be costly.
I don't think I meant to say that.
Okay, that's why I'm asking, yeah. And to have the board go through, to, to have, to have, to go through the town board.
Which I didn't think that was required either because it's just our practice.
It's our restriction.
Yeah, yeah, that's why I flagged it, that's all.
Yeah, I, I, I don't recall saying that and I don't know why I would.
Okay.
What was it?
I'll check that.
Historically, like going back and, and weaving every other prop, like, I know my property has a clearing and grading line.
Retroactive?
Yeah, retroactive, yeah. But because the whole thing is a limited disturbance, clearing grading line is during construction, really. And then post-construction, as I put in my email, there's other, often more restrictive, uh, um, setbacks and protections. Um, that's at least been my experience, maybe that was the comment.
Maybe, uh.
Yeah, if we were going to, if we were going to go through and, and look at every existing one and decide whether it should stay or go.
Oh, that could, that would be a task, yeah, yeah.
Or, you know.
I would probably do it.
Yes, that would do it.
Like that would, yeah, that would sort of do it. Because you're right, is if there's a subdivision and this board decides this is a, this is an imposition on the neighborhood, we want a barrier around them so the neighbors aren't too upset and the limits of, you know, the grading and the limits of disturbance are set. That makes sense for, you know, other things until they develop. So, uh, a sort of overall global resolution could be tough to do.
Yeah, and I think also, um, at least from my perspective, there is still value in these in certain circumstances. Um, so I don't think we would want to do a, you know, a blanket global change and elimination. I, I think as they come up, uh, I mean, I think Sabrina's, uh, suggested last time that if they come up because they're caught or snared in this, and we would do this right away, very quickly, like we did that night, go to public hearing right away, adopt, you know, change the resolution, either eliminate the, the lines, change the lines to accommodate the, um, the owner, or whatever the action is that we think is appropriate. I just think that we need to keep in mind going forward on new subdivisions and, and as we take a look at these piecemeals, they come to us, we have to be really mindful. And I, I just think the burden should be on the planning board to have reasons for imposing clearing and grading limit lines over and above all the other demarcations and, and regulations that we have in town. And if we don't, if we just do it because we're regulating preference, we prefer not to see lawn, I, I don't think that's appropriate. That, my take on it. But, uh, again, I don't think we should do it globally, but I think that would be costly. But my understanding is that we, um, you know, I sent a note to the supervisor and I see, uh, Jeff also sent a note to the town board, um, just to apprise them, that's what we were thinking of. But I didn't think it would require any kind of legislative action on the board of the town board. But I didn't think it would require any kind of legislative action on the part of the town board.
No, 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 it, it, it's a restriction this board put in place on any given subdivision or site plan approval, and it would be your jurisdiction to remove it, waive it.
Change it.
Change it, right, alter it, yeah.
Yeah, it's completely within your, your um subdivision and site kind of review abilities.
And discretion too.
Yes.
But if an applicant comes into the building department and the building department determines that there's a violation, not from that applicant, but from a prior applicant, they still have to come to the planning board and go through the process. If we, if we wanted to try to change that, is that possible?
You'd have to, you'd have to. I don't know if you could.
Okay, that might be the costly town board thing.
That's costly.
Absolutely.
And it's hard to change it until you see the viol, like, you know, what, hopefully, we're we're coming up with a procedure where it gets to us quickly, efficiently, and the people know that this is a, this is an easy one.
Right.
You know, as opposed to that, those limits are there for a reason, like this wetlands. You know, somebody comes in and says, oh, oh, the fence was, oh, you know, that's my land. What are you telling me? I can't do it. Um, you know, this, so.
Yep, and I think.
You need to see the.
Yeah, going, that stuff going forward, I totally agree with it. I think the, I think it was the people that were here a couple of weeks ago that did nothing wrong.
Right.
And they got, had to do all this stuff.
Lots of them, that's the problem.
You know, and they, and they had to spend a chunk of money that I'm sure not everybody has.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
You know?
And I think, Sabrina, you mentioned that the staff would also look in their discretion, waive the escrow. Uh, I think you raised that, Jeff.
Yeah.
And and said, you know, that's that's an imposition as well, so maybe we can uh avoid that where it makes sense. And I think it probably will make sense in most cases, but I I don't think it's uh correct to say a hundred percent of the cases. There will be cases where it will be important.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Agreed. And and we're all about discretion here. I mean, that's what we do. So, okay. Do you want that line stricken, John?
Sure, if you could. I'll talk to Felicia.
Okay. All right, any other changes, changes or thoughts?
Page two, so line thirty-seven, I'm absent. Line forty-nine, I make a motion.
You're good.
Wow, how'd you do that?
Oh, because.
But I, I'm confused here, right?
I'm going to tell you why. You did that, because that's the um actual resolution
Okay.
that we put in.
This is the eighteenth, but on the fourth, which is the ab.
You were there.
Extract, I was not here, but on the, okay, on the eighteenth I was. Okay, want to make sure.
Yes.
Back to the future.
Yeah, okay.
Good, okay. All right, anyone else anything? I'm good. If not, as amended, is there a motion to adopt the minutes of uh March eighteen?
Motion?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And is there a motion to close the meeting?
Motion?
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right, we're all set.